Yes, she does.
Oh my goodness. Stanley, I've known you for fifteen years.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation undergone indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Um, approval of the February eleventh and March eleventh, twenty-five meeting minutes. Let's start with the February eleventh minutes.
The ones, the corrections after, the ones that were corrected? Yeah. So I would make a motion that we approve the corrected minutes for the February meeting.
You referring to the amended ones?
The amended, yes.
Go to second. Your second. There's a first and second of your discussion.
I think, I thought we still had a couple things to, uh, at least one here. Councilman Lamar made a motion to table, uh, actually March or?
I think.
The revised.
The revised is, is, just, she took March out. No, yeah, until, just say, until we get sufficient information to make an intelligent decision.
And then what about under old business?
I'm just gonna move that standard one. Cause they were saved as original share revisions and amended. Alright, then I, um, that's the end of my discussion. Um, so the motion is to approve the amended minutes, uh, minutes, sorry. All those in favor, um, say aye.
Aye.
All those posting side. Motion carries. Um, the March eleventh minutes.
I have a couple of, um, suggested changes. Can we start with them?
Sure.
Um, under amendment of the agenda, um, I think we, we wanna put eminent with an E. E M I N E and T. It's in the third, the third sentence there. And then, the last page, under public comment, again, because we didn't submit changes Karen, this is why I'm going to this kinda detail. So, uh, at the top of Michael, he says, he wants the council to remember they received two notices from the people and they need to look at them again. One was called notice of different sharing capacity. And it says of as public trustee, I think we mean of public trustee as an agent of the people. And we capitalized the people earlier in that paragraph and then we didn't, uh, in the other, so I was just gonna say can we be consistent? And then, um, again, sort of grammatical, councilwoman, councilwoman Richie wanted to ask that each of the council members do better with public decorum. Uh, second, then the next sentence, although people get passionate, she thinks they, I think it would be, she thinks the entire council needs versus need to be careful of defamation. And then I, I said and or liable, L I B E L, and do better. Um, and then again grammatical, in the last, almost the last paragraph, he was questioning as to exactly what documents the council president needed, not needing. And then the last sentence in that paragraph, she is wanting all agenda requests to be given to the council. The Monday, would it be the Monday a week? So it would be the week before the council meeting. I just didn't, I, I didn't know if that read well, the Monday a week before, so maybe it's maybe, yeah, Monday previous, before the council meeting started. Does that make sense Karen?
Yeah, I'll just, I'll get your specific.
And then the only other thing, since it's being a grammatical nut job up here, is under new business, we had capitalized comprehensive plan and thoroughfare, thoroughfare plan. I'm not sure those need to be capitalized. Those are my changes, I don't know, anybody else say?
Anyone else have any revisions of the minutes? Is there a motion?
I believe we approved the minutes as revised.
Is there a second?
I'll second him.
All those in favors, say aye.
Aye.
All those posting side. Motion carries. Um, legal update.
So, excuse me, there are several things going on right now that we just wanted to bring the attention to. So, one of the things that I was preparing was to have a discussion regarding Senate Bill one, that changed all yesterday again. So, some of the takeaways from Senate Bill one, you have a resolution that's in front of you for joint resolution later in the meeting, which, um, still is pertinent because of the language, but, um, an amendment has been offered and they're working through it right now. There's going to be a lot of elected officials at the State House today to discuss the changes to Senate Bill one. So most pertinent issues that are facing Boone County specifically is that it still includes the complete elimination of the business personal property tax. So, if you think about what is coming into Boone County over the next few years, none of the business personal property that, which is in those, uh, factories or industries, uh, will be taxed, it, will you be able to collect any tax upon? Um, the fix that the legislature has indicated will be a local option tax, so you could pass an income tax against your residents, uh, to try and recoup some of those bonds. But there's a cascading effect that happens with, uh, that business personal property tax elimination. One of the things that is out there is when you have a bond, so we, um, really anytime you take a bond into consideration, essentially every project is now that's going to be bonded is a capital project, which falls under the analysis. So it's a point two five percent for remonstrance or point four percent for referendum. When you take away that business personal property tax, that is a substantial amount of money that goes away, which makes those percentage points much, much lower. So you're going to hit those referendum and, um, remonstrance issues on, almost every single bond moving forward. Additionally, there is a cooling off period, so any debt obligation that's gonna be taken that is for less than five years, there's a one-year cooling off period. Now, this council has not, since I've been here, gone around and dealt with a kind of what you call rate stabilization taxes, but there are several communities, I think several within, uh, York County itself, that when, because of growth, the tax rate is set to fall dramatically. In order to keep it kind of a steady tax rate, so you're not going up and down and up and down, have taken now what they call a rate stabilization bond, which is a one-year bond that keeps the rate close to, still probably comes down a little bit, but close to what the tax rate was for the year previous. Those will be taken out of, um, the realm of possibility with this cooling off period now, cause you have a one-year cooling off period, so I guess technically you could do it, cool off for a year, then do it again, but it's going to make that difficult. The bigger issue with the bonds is because of the way that they're treating both, um, the general fund, the elimination of the business personal property tax, and the replacement being income tax, it is almost impossible to know specifically how much income tax you are going to be able to generate, right? You have a pretty good guess limit as to what the business personal property tax is. I think the unintended consequence here is, when you want to go get a bond, you cannot obligate business personal property tax, or things that you know, have a good calculation as to what it's going to be, I don't know how rating agencies are going to be able to rate any municipality across the state of Indiana, um, because it's all fluctuation, it's a guess limit. Yeah, it's an absolute guess limit as to what that income's going to be. I think that's going to result in higher interest rates for any community, county, city, town, whatever, that wants to take out a bond, because you're not gonna be able to get your triple A credit rating, all this stuff, you're not going to be able to get ready at the same manner as you were when you passed, because there is no given for the extent for the life of that bond. You know what taxes should be, we don't know what the income tax is gonna be. Another big issue that you're gonna be looking at, that's really going to impact Boone County, is, you know, there's been a lot of discussion about the maximum growth levy. And in the past, it's been four years, or four years, four percent, but, um, you were able to apply for a maximum levy growth appeal if you have a history of growing in excess of that. This legislation, for one year, is going to keep it at four percent for that faster growing communities, or communities that aren't growing as fast, it is three percent, and it eliminates all of the maximum levy growth appeals out there. So, despite the fact that Boone County is one of the fastest growing counties in the state of Indiana, that your investments are going to go up significantly, your AV is going to go up significantly, you will only be able to capture a four percent maximum growth during, for one year, we don't know what it's gonna do after that. Obviously, that's going, could have a huge impact on the community. The other thing that ties in with this, and I know I'm going on, it's just that this hit yesterday, um, so we're still trying to, um, get all of the information. One of the unintended consequences, I think, is, that's really important to Boone County is, I watched you talk about your libraries, and you've got some phenomenal libraries in this county, I've been over to this library several times. Libraries get funded from property tax. When you take away part, a huge part of the property tax quotient, you're going to be looking at a situation in which libraries aren't gonna have the same funding. One of the things that libraries cannot do is they cannot impose or collect income taxes. So in order to get to the same level of funding that your libraries are today, if you impose an income tax, the county would have to be willing to simply give away some of the revenue it has to make the libraries, because they don't have a mechanism, um, to, to capture that back. That, that's kind of the high level issues, I'm happy to take any questions on here, a lot of the other ones really are, uh, smaller governmental entities, so cities, counties, or cities and towns, when, in townships, when you talk about like fire territories and things of that nature, there's a lot of language in there regarding that, but that's not necessarily something that this council gets involved with. But, I'm happy to answer any questions that I can, um, because again, this is still pretty fluid and fresh.
I mean, it's fluid up until Thursday.
Yeah.
I'm just, there, there's a ton that's gonna happen between now and Thursday.
Nope.
It, there's a lot that's gonna happen between now and Thursday. All right, in a, has everyone read the letter from Thornton?
Are you talking about the resolution?
Yeah.
From James Town, James, no, sorry, I was confused, yes, yes.
I, yeah, go ahead.
So, I mean, that, that, that's an issue that's gonna be, uh, in, in front of you basically, that state, that while local income tax could be of, a help in getting rid, addressing the business personal property tax elimination, it's not enough to provide, um, the funding for your locals, so.
Jewel, a year ago Senator, then Senator Braun, uh, made the, uh, brought up the discussion with respect to the property taxes here in Indiana, and we're, we're gonna do our best to get these things lowered, take them back to twenty twenty-one rates. And every one of us in here said, woo, yay, rah rah, and then there's some of us that said, but wait a minute, I know I as a council member, where are we gonna get these dollars? How are they gonna come in? So if you had a crystal ball in front of you, what do you think counties and governments across the state of Indiana will do to alleviate this loss that's definitely gonna happen?
Well, I mean, the mechanism that you're gonna have is local income tax. And so, I, I think a way, this is gonna be my ineligible way of putting this, essentially what I see this legislation doing is taking the tax burden off of corporations and businesses, and then putting it onto local counties to initiate a tax, income tax, which then puts it directly on the individual workers. That is not going to be able to make up the difference that you're losing in that, in business personal property tax. And when that hits, it's, I don't see how you make that jump, there's nothing that's really filled that gap, especially when there's a limit on the maximum levy growth that you can catch it. Well, that's capped, you can't catch up on it. And so, what, in a crystal ball, what could happen is, it may be a wonderful environment for businesses to come in, they're gonna have a much, much more difficult time finding the workers to fi, fill those positions that are created, because the individuals are gonna be taxable, and then their local communities aren't gonna have as much money to spend on quality of life type projects, your trail systems, your parks, your roads, sorry, name. Those are the things that are going to fall to the wayside, because you must provide fire protection, police protection, and those amenities, and those are a huge cost to every governmental entity. So, it, it, it's going to be tough.
It is a ti-
It's gonna be a real challenge.
It is a, it is a tightening of the belt that we have been, some of us have been talking about for the last two to three years. We've talked about an excess of adding this rainy day fund, and oh, we should do this, how we just analogy Game of Thrones, for those who watch it, you know, winter's coming, I see the two that enjoy, winter is here, like, it is here, and, and I tell you that access that we've had, because when you talk about the libraries, the folks that have come to us from these other municipalities that have asked for money for, you know, improving streetlights or railways, the number of people that are going to be coming to us as a municipality asking for funding because there's been a shortfall, is about to be intermountable, and then some of the schools who are going to see a shortfall, one thing that we have to remember is, this county council funds school resource officers through the sheriff's office, and we have not seen an increase in the amount of money that the schools contribute to that, and we've seen an increase, and rightfully so, of how we pay our school resource officers. So, a catching up of what, correct, of what Jewel is talking about, there's not going to be a catching up, there's a gap, and it is going to widen more and more year over year. The legislators, they put us in the worst conundrum you could possibly imagine, and as we look at the budget going into this year, over the next three to five years, there will be tough decisions that have to be made, I, I promise you, like, I've looked at this so many times that it makes me nervous, and I, I think there are gonna be some amendments that are gonna happen between now and Thursday, just to talk to folks at the legislature, that will ease it, but overall, it's not, it still will not be enough for what we need to do, or what we need to prepare for, overall.
And, and one of the things that may happen as well is, this is not Governor Braun's tax plan.
It is not.
I am not sure that Governor Braun likes this legislation, and I'm not sure that Governor Braun would sign this legislation.
Maybe he would veto it.
Now, will it be enough to override a veto, let's say, I don't, we will see, I don't know. But it is, it's a little bit scary from the governmental entity's side, as to how you're gonna provide this, you will not be able to pro, provide the same services that you provide the past number of years that I have, uh, been here with you guys, it's, it's just not gonna happen. And it's, it really is gonna have a larger impact on communities like Boone County that are seeing growth at a tremendous rate, because you're not going to be able to capture your growth.
So Jewel, if he does veto, then he'll, he would just call a special session in the, in the summer, is that?
You could try.
Yeah, just say.
So, i- if it gets vetoed and it's not overridden in the State House, um, you know, this is budget year, they got to come up with something, so there's gonna have to be some legislation that's passed regarding that. My guess is that they would try and work really hard this, this summer to get something done. But what scares me is oftentimes when you're under that, a more of a time crunch in a situation like that, it's just, solutions aren't well thought out, it's just like, this 'll get us the votes.
It's a fix.
And then we get the unintended consequences later.
And we won't have another budget cycle for another two years, of when you can see a more viable solution, so you're stuck again.
Yeah, so you're looking at, and, I mean, normally I would say it's a two-year crunch where we're, you're hoping that you can get something fixed, in this situation, it's gonna be a year-to-year thing, because that four percent maximum growth is good only for this next year, and then they were gonna come back the following year, in a non-budget cycle, to address that again. So if they do what they want it to be, which is lower this, well, there are some legislation that said it was zero percent, that you guys were gonna just stay at the same regardless of growth, um, we, we have no idea what that's gonna be in the next iteration, so.
In, in your years with, um, government law, have you ever experienced anything like this that might be coming down the?
The, I almost hate to say this, but in my, in excess of quarter century of practicing law in the government field.
How many years?
The, the other largest impact that we saw was property tax caps in two thousand eight, because we didn't know how that was gonna work with the one, two, three percent property tax caps, cause if, when those were enacted, they were enacted in connection with the Kern and Shepherd report. The Kern and Shepherd report was a study done by the former lieutenant governor, and then the former, uh, chief justice of the Supreme Court, to go through, and, for lieutenant governor and governor, to go through and come up with a way to save money for taxpayers. And they came up with this one, two, three percent schedule, but they said at the same time, this contemplates the consolidation of governments. So, you have a lot of, um, I don't wanna say the unigov like Indianapolis, but on the overlapping things, if one office can do the same thing as another office, there's no reason to have two elected officials for that, you have a single elected official. They contemplated getting rid of townships and trustees, taking all of that tax money in. It was this whole efficiency type thing, what the legislature did is, they said, hey, this one, two, three percent tax sounds great, we're gonna forget about the rest of it. So, the consolidation part of that didn't come into play. And to, today, we are still dealing with property tax cap implications. I mean, we're seventeen years since that was enacted, um, it's, a lot of communities are still struggling with it and trying to deal with how to address the shortfall that they've had, and then you've got this one coming on top of them now, again. So it's, that's the only one that I could put in this one.
Has there been any discussion in the state legislature with respect to the billions of dollars they have, and the, the state of Indiana has, in the rainy day fund, and saying, let's give that money back to Boone County, to the other ninety-one counties out there also?
I can't say that there's no discussion, um, I can say that I see very little chance of that ever happening. The state has taken the position of, we need to take more money in because the locals can't do theirs. So, what happens is, you have a lot of legislatures that look at one bad actor or one bad community, and then they create legislation regarding it all, that's where the fire territory stuff came into play, you have a community that didn't do it right, and so because of that-
Everybody got punished.
Everybody is now getting punished. You have, the attack on TIFF that has occurred for decades, well, that's because of the way that Carmel utilized TIFF, and it did not sit well with a lot of people i- in the State House, and so it's, TIFF is constantly under attack because of the way that one community took advantage of it.
The legislature said never mind.
Debbie had a question.
Just real quick, since these changes were in the last minute, do they have to go to the House for approval before, I mean, you know how the bills go back and forth?
This is a House amendment.
It's a House amendment.
So this is being authored by the House right now, and then if it passes the House, will be sent over to the Senate just for currents, see if it goes.
Which Senator Bray has already said, do they wanna, say, nine, it'll be done. Would just get them to go back, Senator Bray, they'll flip and get it passed and done.
Alright, so that's the rosy news for government officials. Couple other updates that I want to give, there is a new public access council that has been put in for the state. It had been Luke Britt for a number of years, and, and so I did wanna talk about a few things, cause there were some questions regarding who can participate in meetings, who can't, it's a fluid situation always, but the position that Luke had taken, with the advent of, um, online meetings and things of that nature, is, he doesn't mind, the public access council didn't take exception to a situation in which, I'm gonna talk about this council, there'd be a majority of you, let's say, at a commissioners meeting, that you're just sitting there, where, um, Luke had the issue is, if any counselor then speaks at that meeting, there's no way to differentiate between counsel, county counselor, or, uh, individual, and so at the moment that somebody starts speaking, then that truly then does kind of become a council meeting, and that's where he says is a violation of the open door law. So I know that there's been a lot of emails that went around recently, um, as it stands right now from the opinions of the public access counselor, I would feel much more comfortable if you had less than a form at a commissioner meeting, because you never know when something's gonna come up that you're gonna wanna speak on. Until, until there's another opinion from the public access counselor that overrides that position, that's the concern that I have, um, and I have no idea, there's no track record, I don't have a, a relationship with the new public access counselor, I look to establish one with her, just so I can have a better idea as to her thought process, what she considers, um, so that I can better advise my clients, but, um, right now, I'm still acting off of what Luke has said, because that's what's in writing out here for consulting. As that changes through the, uh, opinions coming through the new public access counselor, my advice to you will, could change as well.
If there are three of us in the audience and then four of us virtually, is that okay?
As long as nobody's talking.
Yeah.
But as soon as one person talks, that's where the issue arises, and that's why I'm saying, I mean, it, it could be none of you in the audience and four people up there on Zoom.
Yeah.
As soon as somebody talks, that's still, because of the, um, electronic meeting statutes, that's still a meeting.
It triggers it.
That's why I would let them know.
So two things, so we can publicly advertise.
You could.
So, to make sure.
There are some counties, Jewel, that put it on their, um, meeting dates that are sent out at the beginning of the year, that has an asterisk at the bottom that states that council commissioners can attend other county meetings, is that possible to do for the council?
I am not, well, you can do it, I'm not a big fan of just the asterisk there, because I don't think that qualifies with the public, um, or the open door law, in that, you have to advertise the meetings themselves. And so I think if you, at the beginning of the year, when you do your general advertisement and give it over to the newspaper, um, if you put on there that the county council shall hold a meeting and be in session concurrently with the commissioners and their meetings, I think you could do it that way, but then you would need meetings, meeting minutes for every single one of those things, um, and it, it could get a little messy as to how to make that work.
And then-
Go ahead.
And the second option is, we could just ask the new public access counselor for new opinion.
You could.
You could do what?
We could just ask the new public access counselor for new opinion.
Okay, got it. If, if, if there are four of us in the room at a commissioners meeting, and one of us decide to get up and speak, can the other three walk out?
I just need one of you to walk in.
Just one, okay.
Because then I don't have four.
Okay, or sign off if you're virtual.
But where it gets messy is whether it's virtual, how do you keep track of who is there?
Yeah.
Right, yeah, yeah, okay.
And, you know, Councilman William, so one thing that I'm, we could always go ask. Sometimes we don't like what the response is.
I, I, I get that, but I would rather ask and know than for us to be on it and Dustin gets on to say, hey, y'all, and then we all get in trouble. Hey, Dustin.
You forgot to watch this.
See? I didn't know.
Where's the muddy water with respect to, oh, wait a minute, Kevin has first amendment rights, he's allowed to speak.
They don't.
How do you clear it up?
They don't see it as necessarily muddy water. Just a couple issues. First of all, as elected officials, you give up certain rights. Like you're governed by certain things that you can't.
That makes sense.
By taking your, that position.
I signed up for it.
And secondarily, in meetings, I mean, it's one of the other things that we've been talking about, there is no right technically for speak, for anybody to speak at the meetings except for you guys. It is the meeting of the body. And so if you allow public comment, which this council has agreed to do, then the public can come up and talk. But the only right that they have generally speaking, that is absolute at your meetings, is when it requires a public hearing. Then they have, the public has the right to come and speak. That's where we get a little muddier, is if the commissioners had a public hearing and you wanted to come up and talk. But still, because you are elected official, it's kind of.
I understand. Thank you.
Would a third option be that we figure out who the three are every, every time there's a commissioner meeting? And I mean, we, we almost make a policy or, or an unwritten rule, I don't know which, to say these three people are planning on attending. And that would be the president's discretion. Or again, I don't, I don't even know if that's workable, but is that a possibility?
So that gets closer to concerns regarding what Counselor Van Horn talked about, about limiting you guys too much.
Got it.
By to say, Councilman Ritchie can't go to the meeting. It's different than, you can go, just don't talk. Or there's more, right? Any questions?
Is anybody in the audience, if, if I look at Debbie and I tell Debbie, I'm here, there's, let's say, three of us here in the room, and I look at Debbie, I can't go up because there's one here and then three others here, but here's what I want you to do, go up there and say, is she allowed to speak for me?
Hey, Beer, make her a cup of coffee.
What I'm saying is, I would never walk up and say I'm speaking on behalf of Kevin.
Yeah.
But if I walk up and have my own thought, they would, but I don't think you could go up and say, well, but I didn't in my room.
I get it.
Can you circulate an email or text to say, hey, I'm attending, hey, I'm not? So you know, like, if you're online, you may not be able to see who's there in person.
I mean, just.
Come on, life's a lot.
Is that we're making decisions, we can't, can't be in these texts, emails, making decisions amongst each other?
No, I'm sorry, what was that?
I thought we can't be in group emails, texts, making decisions amongst ourselves.
Cannot make, take a vote or final action. So this is the great line of the judge. If it is informational purposes, that is for the planning of it, public access counselor said, yeah, that's, that's okay. But if it is an actual encouraging a vote or encouraging action one way or the other immediately on an item that is within and germane to the council, so if it's a budgetary issue and stuff like that, that is absolutely prohibited. Now, that has fluctuated even under Luke's time there. It used to be no communication with everybody on there. Then, okay, well, you can send stuff out, but it shouldn't be a back and forth communicating, let's do this, or how about this, or it shouldn't be a discussion to more of, okay, there's certain things that you're going to have to get organized without, that isn't truly final action of the council commissioners.
So for the April fourteenth commissioners' meeting, what, what do you suggest we do?
We just don't talk, right?
Be there, just don't talk?
Yeah.
It's hard for some of us, I would just say. Or somebody can leave the room.
Yeah.
Which means we need the chairs and.
Yeah, that's right.
Hold up, walking mask on.
Okay. Anything else?
Council adding.
Oh, yes, sorry, I meant to go there with this discussion. You know, one of the things that we've had and that I've seen over the past couple meetings is, you know, question is, for the council, when do you get to talk about issues that aren't on the agenda type of situation? One of the things that several of my other committees have done is enact a council comment period. So it's separate from the public comment area. It, it is reserved for council. Usually you have a public comment and then you move over to council comment. And it's kind of like a good of the order type situation where you can go down the row and you can just say, hey, reminder that we've got a Memorial Day celebration coming up, things of that nature. Or issues that you think the council needs to be thinking about that aren't on the agenda that you hope to get onto the agenda of future meetings.
So you can't get into the weeds.
It, it's tough to limit that, you know, and it's up to this council if you want to enact the council comment period. My recommendation is to have some guardrails up, but not as many. So you have a limitation of time when it comes to public comment, which is, I think, two minutes for the council. So it's a two-minute time period. My guess is, it's probably a little bit more, maybe it's a five-minute time.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense.
Because some of it may be an issue of, you know, hey, I just got this information, we, you know, if it was this Senate Bill One type issue, here's some information that I heard, I think all of us need to consider this as we get ready for our budget meetings and hearings, you know, what we need to think of and how we need to prioritize. That, that may be a little longer time period than two-minute thing. So, I mean, I would, I would think that you would want to put some guardrails around that.
Sure.
But by setting it up and getting it on the agenda, then you kind of lock in your to have discussions essentially on non-agenda items for the council.
How much discussion have you had with the council about this?
This is my thing, and then I've talked to Jennifer a little bit, saying, have you guys thought about county council? And it's our county council comments. I've not talked to other members.
So how's that discussion been?
About having the county, I, I think, I, I don't want to speak for Jennifer, but I think she's open to it because.
What's your advice?
My advice is, I, I, I think it makes sense to have county council comments. I mean, obviously, you don't want it to turn into, well, you're a jerk and I hate you and stuff like that. But it's a time that is locked in for the council. So that if an item is not on the agenda, but you want to raise it to the group, that you have that opportunity.
Did you broach the conversation?
Yeah, this is my thing based off of the other things.
Why was that?
What's that?
Why was that?
Because we had some questions regarding, do I make, does a council take action in when we want to raise an issue in public comment period? Or we don't have an opportunity to do it if it's not public comment period? And so that's why raise council comment.
I'm just curious, you've been here for, representatives for three years, and it's, we've always had comment, it's never come up before. So I'm just curious as to why it came up all of a sudden.
I, I sat through a lot of contentious meetings for this council over the duration of the time that I've been here. Most of those have been about truly legitimate issues that this council needs to consider, whether it be disagreements amongst each other or disagreements with other elected officials. But it, it's been somewhat contentious. What I did hear is, I saw the past couple meetings that there were a couple specific questions, when do I raise this? Because, I mean, fact of the matter is, President Haas Center put out her agenda requirements, which the president's allowed to do, saying, I want this information at this time so we can properly plan for the meeting. That's up to the purview of the president of this body. There are questions, how do we get things on that agenda if, well, it's the president's meeting? I thought this was a good way to raise issues that may not be on the agenda.
I think it's a good idea.
And so I, I can present and what I'll do is prepare some county council, those guideline type things for your considerations to add to your local rules.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
New business extension annual report, Andrea.
I respectfully ask next time to be before. So Andrea Hafield, Purdue Extension from county, just a real quick thank you to you for allowing us to be on the agenda. I'm going, I'm going to introduce Hannah Myers. She is our extension board president this year, and we are going to get our parts kicked off here.
Thank you for allowing us to have this time. As she said, I'm Hannah Myers, president of the extension board. I promise we won't take up very much time, but because we are kind of far removed from other county offices, we want, we enjoy this time once a year to come and kind of give a presentation of our programs. So you have in front of you the annual reports for extension. These are just very high-level highlights of some of the programs that we're very proud of in the county that we feel like are making great strides in the county. So if you could read those on your own time, that'd be great. And I'm going to turn it over to Pandora Libard, our extension educator for Health and Human Services.
Good morning, guys.
Good morning.
Pandora Taylor, HHS educator, your HHS educator. So I brought Trina Rose from Withum Health Services with me today. She's the wellness coordinator. Her and I have been partnering for two years now on employee wellness programs. So she's going to share about the impact of our partnership with you all.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So yeah, like she said, we've actually, Pandora and I have partnered really closely the last couple of years, but Withum has partnered with Purdue Extension pretty much since the inception of our program in two thousand and nine. So we have an employee wellness program for our staff, but we also try to go out into the community and, and really keep helping wellness on the forefront of our community members. So Pandora has led a variety of programs with us. And I think even back when we were going through COVID as a healthcare organization, I always really prided myself on our wellness program being live, in-person presentations. And we're not just another cookie cutter wellness program. And we really try to follow evidence-based programming and not jump on the latest fad. And then COVID hit and we couldn't be in person and live. And so we had to get really creative. And she actually led one of our very first book clubs. It was by Dr. Julie Smith, and it was Why Has Nobody Told Me This Before? And it's a book on mental health. And so it was a really unique way to attack mental health for our healthcare workers. And we've continued that book club since then. Pandora has provided so many programs. We have one coming out next week, April Stress Awareness Month. And so we're going to do a stress management seminar, which is really important for our healthcare workers. And also to help teach their patients. So the information that we give our providers, we hope trickles down to them educating their patients. So we feel like our, our role is really impactful and important. You have any questions, Maria? I'm really grateful for Purdue Extension. I think that people think of the 4H program when they think of Purdue Extension, but the work that they do with our local farmers and ag and with our youth and, and just with the Health and Science programs, and a really great partnership.
Fantastic. Numbers are impressive. Thanks for all your hard work.
Now I'd like to introduce Jeff Wagner with FLOR.
Thank you, Andrea. Thank you, council. I'm glad to be able to speak today about our great relationship with, through extension. As Andrea mentioned, I'm with FLOR Corporation. I'm responsible for communications and community outreach on the Lily-Levina project. Just as some background, FLOR is a Fortune 200 company based in Irving, Texas. We're, got twenty thousand employees all around the globe. Personally, I've worked on construction projects or cleanup projects in Ohio, several big defense Cold War era cleanup projects, and have been on infrastructure projects in northern Virginia and Boston. And I have to just say, the support we get here is tremendous. We knew early on that there were concerns by residents, by local farmers, by elected officials, that with the big leap development and the Lily project that was being placed right in the middle of Wit Road, and there were farmers that, that use this as a cut-thru area, that you've got farms all around and you've got a big influx of workers coming in, five thousand plus, that may not be familiar with how to negotiate the roads and share it with farm equipment. And that's where.
Or residents. Or residents.
Or residents. That's where the Purdue Extension and our friends with the Farm Bureau stepped up. Andrea and the Daggies contacted me. This was shortly after the groundbreaking. They offered insight into this. They helped develop collateral materials so that we could meet with our employees during our Monday morning safety talks, put signs up around the area, even brought in large pieces of farming equipment that they parked in very visible areas for our workers to walk around and see. So anyway, it started back in the fall of twenty-three, and our first meeting in one tent, and we probably had about two hundred and fifty workers. And that has grown to last Monday, they were out, spoke to about five hundred workers in, we have five tents now, but we've consolidated meetings for, for the sake of this. But they spoke to over a thousand workers. So, and I can tell you, the workers really pay attention to this when they come out and speak about it and share their experience. And just the, you know, the need to be sensitive, to be good construction neighbors, and certainly respect the farmers that are out there doing their job and do what we can to make sure that, that they stay, they stay safe as well. So we really appreciate the new extension support, especially at the Farm Bureau as well. Really, the kind of support that, that we get on this project, to me, is very unique. So we very much appreciate it.
Mr. Wagner, I introduce myself to you this morning. When I came in, I thanked you out there, but I want to say it publicly for what FLOR does with respect to Boone County. You guys have come into this county and you've given a lot of money back in contributions with respect to, you've got the list. So when you go back to corporate, you tell them that we here at Boone County Council, thank them for all the hard work that you guys have done with respect to your philanthropic.
Thank you very much. Our employees love to get involved. We've got a big workforce. We want to leverage that and be, have a positive impact on the community. So we love doing it.
Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Stephanie. I'm the 4H educator here in Green County. And with me today, I have Eliza Myers. Eliza is in her tenth and final year of 4H, so she's going to tell you a little bit about her journey. Hello.
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 My name is Eliza Myers. I'm seventeen years old and a senior in high school. Both of my parents grew up in 4H with my mom, Hannah, being a ten-year member and my dad a nine-year member. So it was pretty much a given that my siblings and I would be in 4H. Like she said, I'm a ten-year member and I've completed eighty-four projects through my four, ooh, through my 4H career, with another nine in the coming year, with sheep, swine, miscellaneous crafts, and fashion view being my ten-year projects. However, I also do projects like home environment, food preparation, consumer clothing, and many more. All of these have instilled a sense of responsibility, time management, decision-making, and a hard work ethic. Since I was seven, I've had the opportunity to have livestock to take care of and to love. Because we live just outside of city limits, we don't have a great place to house our livestock. We've always had great friends who let us rent their barns. However, because the animals weren't within walking distance, we would get up early in the morning and my dad would drive us to the barn. We would have to plan our whole morning and afternoon around when we would go feed and work animals. Now that we keep the livestock at my family's property, we still don't live there. So now that I can drive, my brother and I go up twice a day, every day, to do our chores. We monitor what kind and how much feed to give and when to give it, when to give them exercise and when to take care of skin and hair. The livestock projects have always been a great way to build responsibility, especially since you have to actively look after and keep another living being alive and healthy. It's not the type of project that you can start and finish the week before fair. It takes months of planning, hard work, and commitment. As I stated earlier, I do take projects that aren't livestock. Food preparation and consumer clothing have always been favorites of mine. They are both projects that I can carry with me after 4H. Food preparation is a project that covers how to plan, prepare, and make a meal. In the past, I have learned to make things as easy as grilled cheese and tomato soup. In the past, I have learned to make things as easy as grilled cheese and tomato soup, to homemade smoked pork butt and a mac and cheese. It works you through how to plan and time everything correctly and how to create a meal that best fits your chosen dish. It teaches a skill that everyone should at least know the basics of. You don't need to master creme brulee, but you should at least know how to make the simplest meals. While consumer clothing teaches you how to shop and fill your closet cheaply and ethically. It shows you how to do easy repairs on clothing items, how to take care of your closet, and how to find clothes that fit you and your style. In taking this project, I have purged my closet of things that I don't need. I found my style and my confidence has grown exponentially. Because of 4H, my family and I have formed relationships with other families in the barns and in the projects around us. We went from being first year members with no idea how the Boone County Fair works to my parents being the sheep project leaders, which led to meeting everyone in the barns and eventually working our livestock together. We have made connections and relationships with some amazing people. I can't speak for the other species, but the sheep barn has truly become a family over the years. We all work together even though we are competing against each other. We give tips, do favors, and even run mock shows in the practice arena to help each other out. It's a special, there's a special bond that you form with people when you're sharing sheep together in 90-degree weather. We've found that fair week is much more fun when you have friends to share it with. 4H can be scary to new members, but the lessons you learn are definitely worth it. I plan to use everything I've learned these past 10 years in my future, whether that's in college, work, or with my family. Now, I don't think I'll have livestock forever, but I know how to take responsibility and manage my time as I work on multiple things at once. And even though public speaking isn't my strong suit, I've had multiple opportunities to step out of my comfort zone. I know how to give speeches and debate different topics. In my ninth year, I was able to be a part of the Boone County 4H Livestock Judging Team. I would place a set of four of a species and try to, and figure out how to defend my placement to a judge. My confidence has grown throughout the years and here I am now. I will always recommend 4H to others. It has truly had an impact on my family and I believe it shows in how we go through life. Thank you.
My mom's better than me.
I get to be a proud mom today too. So this is, this is kind of fun. Do we have any questions for anybody who's spoken today through extension?
No questions, but if you're teaching the rest of the 4H group what you've taught your daughter, Boone County is going to be setting up pretty good. As 17-year-olds, I think it's fair to say most of us up here, I know I didn't. I did, I grew up a mile east of downtown Indianapolis. Although I was involved in scouts from the time I was 10 years old until I was 18, didn't know anything about 4H. But I've been here in Boone County since 1977 and I'm real acquainted with what 4H does. So thank you for what you do and to the rest of the leaders. You're going to go a long way with your confidence. So thank you.
Thank you. That's why we do this.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you for everything. Do you want to talk about this weekend's event that you managed to make so much of that?
Thank you. I didn't even pay him to do this. So lead right back into this. I do have a few things I'd like to highlight. First of all, we as extension could not do this without all of our volunteers. We are so, so, so blessed here in this county to have not only amazing 4H volunteers, but our extension homemakers, our master gardeners, and a plethora of other people are, allow us to multiply the effects. So what you guys give to us will be so much more because of all the people that are there. And I don't want to forget our amazing support staff in our office because they, they keep us running. They're awesome too. So. Also, you each received an invitation. This weekend is our annual meeting. It's going to open house style on Saturday. It's in conjunction with the 4H, 4H, chicken and pork chop barbecue. We skipped that out. So if you noticed in your packets, you did get an invitation and a ticket, let us know if you're planning to use that so we can set aside either your favorite pork chop or barbecue. But everyone is welcome to come. It's 4:00 to 7:30 on Saturday at the Farm Bureau Community Building on the 4H grounds. And I also wanted to highlight, since we were talking about budgets and money, the wonderful annual reports that you guys have received is something we prepare in preparation for our annual meeting. And those were printed in sponsorship by Farm Bureau, a nice donation to help us pay for that. And then the cards that you receive, FLOR Corporation is always so gracious to print those for us to take out to present out at the Lily site. So that's all I have for you. Thank you very much. We appreciate your support as always. And I would take any questions that you have as well.
So Andrea, are there still tickets available for the chicken barbecue?
You can call the extension office and stop by and purchase tickets there right now. You cannot buy them online anymore. And if you come the day of the event, you can still purchase, but it is first comes first served. And when we're out, we're out. So come early and bring lots of friends.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jamestown Resolution.
So the resolution in front of you is a joint resolution that was proposed by Jamestown. This is actually written earlier in response to an earlier version of Senate Bill 1, but it is still pertinent. It talks about the loss of this personal property tax. The adoption of a local income tax is not, would not fill that in the concerns of the need to provide the services that local municipalities and counties are tasked with governing or supplying. So it's up for your consideration. What Jamestown wanted to do is kind of get every elected body of Boone County to be able to provide a joint resolution to term.
The schools have all sent one in, haven't they?
I'm, I'm not sure if the schools have done it. I assume that the schools would-
Yeah, I think the school board already signed it.
Western Boone Community Schools, yes, is listed in here.
So what you need is a motion to support the resolution?
It's a motion to adopt the resolution that's been presented in front of you a second and then it's either up or down.
So moved.
Is there a second? Second. All this, or is there a rediscussion?
It doesn't commit us to anything though financially or nothing like that.
No, this is just saying that this is not very much in favor of Senate Bill 1. So.
Right.
I, the ICCA, they sent out the same thing, if I'm not mistaken.
Correct. So the county council or the, I think all the acronyms. Indiana Commission of County has sent something out like this. Aime has sent something out like this. So this is just kind of the getting everybody on board with this.
Was, was theirs the, I thought their recommendation was to send, was to do on independently or your own resolution? I thought that you meant?
The, they wanted to get a critical mass of resolutions in there. But I think the legislature has gotten the picture of, yeah, it's everybody, all municipalities willing or having issues with this. So I, I think it's less concern us to the critical mass anymore. It's seeing who all puts it in. It's going to be these next couple of days down there in Indianapolis is going to dictate a lot of what's going to, you're going to be dealing with this fall.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Reproportation commissioners, human resources, the Boone Commissioner Byer is presenting on this virtually for us. Commissioner Byer?
Oh, there we go. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Sorry about that. I couldn't unmute for a second there. I assume you just want to go through these one at a time? Does that work or?
That works. Thank you. The first one is the human resource.
Yeah, so this is a, all of these are just reappropriation within our budget. So it's just transferring funds. There's no, no new requests here. And these all, the reappropriations are related also to the item number seven, which is the salary ordinance amendment. So the first one is human, is a reappropriation for human resources to the HR assistant line, which is for the purposes of increase for the HR assistant. She's obviously taken on more duties since January and really since last, since some, last year. Something that wasn't really considered in the 2024 budget. So it's just a small transfer of funds. One other thing that the, you know, she's probably one of the duties that are a little later at a minimum at this point. However, the, the proposed increase still falls between the mid and the max for, for the 2022 salary study when you age it to the current date.
There any questions?
Did I catch that they want to hire another person for that office then?
I, no, I don't think that's what he said. Commissioner Byer, you were muffled there for a second. I think what you were saying is she took the HR assistant to done more job responsibilities last year and this year, but this increase still falls within the salary matrix. Is that correct?
Correct. That's correct.
But you did say you're hiring-
Between the mid and the max.
You didn't say you were hiring somebody else, did you? That's what Councilman Wagner was asking.
Yeah, I was asking, no.
Okay, all right. Did that answer your question, John?
Yes.
All right, thanks.
Are there any other questions? Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Justin's second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, Commissioner Byer, the next one is legal services to county attorney.
Yeah, I would kind of go through B and C together. This would be for the in-house attorney position. And we have, we did a demo, a salary.com description within the last week or so. And based on that information, that the requested salary does fall in line with a minimum amount for this position. Based on that demo, it's a subscription that we'll be voting on at our next commissioner meeting. So I did do a little bit of research in the 2024 county factbook. It doesn't appear that there's a lot of counties that do have an in-house attorney position, but there are some. The requested salary is also in line with that information in the 2024 county factbook. Yeah, this is just a transfer of funds within our budget.
Are there any questions?
What is the amount?
The salary is 130, Commissioner Byer, the salary is 175,000, correct? But for this year, it'll be 134,616.
That's correct.
Are there any, are there any questions? Is there a motion?
You need to do salary, first salary ordinance first.
So in speaking with the county attorney, it was explained to me, and I discussed this ritual too, that we would need to do the reappropriation first and then the salary ordinance amendment.
Yeah, so you, you can do it both ways. The, with the salary ordinance amendment, you just need to make sure that there's money there. So there are, I know that there are a lot of attorneys who like to actually have the money in the line item. And then do the amendment to the salary ordinance. There are some attorneys who say, well, if we don't have something in the salary ordinance, then we don't need the money in that line item. So it, it's, as long as both pass, everything's good. If one does not pass, then we have to go back and fix things up.
Sure.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And then Commissioner Byer, the Commissioner's Legal Services to Retirement.
Yeah, it's also related to the in-house attorney position. So it's just a transfer of funds again.
Any questions? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Was that Dustin?
It is.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Additional request facilities?
Good morning, Mike Speddingwell, Boone County Director of Capital Investments. Yeah, so I have an additional for the jail project to help cover some of our soft costs. The additional was for 108,731.21 cents. We've had some owners expenses and changes that have caused us to need an additional. I believe last year at budget time, we had discussed some of this and we just made the decision then to come back. With the additional, we're still under our 5 million soft cost expenses. I believe there's still about $180,000 there that hasn't been-
Okay.
Of the total soft cost.
There's nothing there. There's nothing.
So nothing was budgeted for this. What's the 108,000 for exactly?
Exactly?
Exactly.
It is all, so we have two quotes from Hamco, which is our metal detectors for the building. Bradford System, which is again a metal detectors. Central Restaurant Supply was a fryer that was requested by the Sheriff's Department to be put in the kitchen. Center Township Electric was some work for work. I'm not 100% sure on the 875, that particular invoice, whether that was with the move of dispatch or that was related to the install of the fryer. ASI and Indy Pro Graphics are both signage for inside the building.
Is this like, I'm, I'm looking at, that's, that's the one that caught my eye.
Center Township was for indirect lights for central control.
Oh, central control module as well.
I'm looking at this graphic sign.
The signage?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Decorative interior signs?
Uh, that's all of our office signage and-
And the non-secured area.
And yeah, ASI is non-secured. And then they're also doing exterior signage on the building as well. We've actually removed some of the signage. So we'll see a little bit of a credit from ASI for signage that's not getting installed.
And I'm assuming the re-low is somebody moving?
Uh, that would be the relocation strategies. Yes, that'll be when we move everybody into the building. They're assisting with the move.
So the, my, the meeting that I did, the sheriff's office is moving themselves. Who else is moving?
Uh, we have to move probation now to keep in the building.
Do we cover that for, do we need to cover the cost for anybody else to move?
No, because the only two, well, uh, we'll have to cover some of the costs for the coroner move. He's got some large safes that we're just not capable of doing ourselves safely. So we will have movers move that, that equipment. So some of, some of those coroner's office stuff will get moved by relocation strategies as well. Keep it.
So my question is that, nothing was budgeted. You're asking for 108,000 now. Are you going to have to come back and ask for more later?
We're very close to the, into the project. We are about six, seven weeks to being complete. By the Hagerman's estimates, we should be done now there end of May. So at this point, I'm not anticipating any other additional.
Does this all get repaid back out of the bond then?
Lit, no, this is coming out of, this is going, this is 1243, the jail lit.
Tell me, Joe.
Nothing was budgeted. Remember this.
Remember they had a line for a construction that was budgeted. They requested 5 million. You guys took it off of the Form 1 because there was no-
There was nothing to justify the 5 million.
But I do recall that we said if something comes up, come back and ask for an additional, support that.
This is just to cover contracts that have already been- Just to cover contracts that have already been approved by the commissioners as well.
And you don't anticipate anything outside of this?
I don't.
May twenty-second, what he told us?
That's what we were told. We've been told a lot of dates, but that is the drop dead for them to be off, for them to get out of there. So it looks, it's looking pretty good right now.
Max, you mentioned that you're still under the five million dollar cost line. How close are you guys to that line?
Uh, right now, it looks like we are about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars under right now.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Is there a motion? Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Right, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now that we've done the reappropriations for HR and legal services, there's a salary ordinance amendment. The first one is for the HR assistant. Is there, are there any questions? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Um, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Then commissioners, in-house attorney. There any questions? Is there a motion?
I remember that we amend the salary ordinance for the in-house attorney.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Say, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Old business, the APC Comprehensive Plan update, Dustin.
Uh, so the APC had three companies come present to them after the first round of going through and scoring them. So they agreed on HWC. The goal is to not exceed four hundred thousand. Uh, we're trying to figure out the pay schedule to see when we would need to come ask for more money. Other than the hundred thousand that's already budgeted.
And maybe possible, we don't have to do an additional this year?
It is a possibility.
What, what did HWC come in at?
So they came in, I think it was two seventy-five.
Okay.
However, there were some options at the bottom of that for like more pop-up events to get the community more involved. There wasn't as many of those scheduled in their quote in comparison to some of the others.
Okay.
So we're anticipating it to be more than the two seventy-five, depending on how many of those happen.
Okay. What do you think Max would be on it, Dustin? Say they, they had some of those.
Uh, it was, depends how many they come up with, right? So we are not anticipating, I, I don't see it going over four hundred. I think our goal is to keep it closer to not exceeding the three fifty range. However, I want to make sure we're doing a pretty good job on this with this, including the comprehensive plan and the thoroughfare plan.
Yep. I agree with that. Okay. So anticipating a three hundred fifty thousand max, that's, that's a hope.
That's an anticipation.
Okay. Thank you.
Public comment, just as a reminder, um, for anyone who wishes to speak, you have to state your name, your address, and your business. Uh, you'll be limited to two minutes with a thirty-second warning. Any public comment? Yes.
Nick Power, Boone County Highway Department. Uh, just briefly, legislation issue with HB, House Bill fourteen sixty-one. Um, it covers a variety of different topics, but the major concern that I want to bring to your guys' attention, I mentioned it before, was the wheel tax requirement to continue to get community crossings. Uh, it's gone through the House, over to the Senate, two committees in the Senate. Supposed to be heard like Thursday. You were talking about, there's a lot of activity. The amendments that came forward did not help, um, as far as were considered. Still has the wheel tax requirement within the legislation that we would have to, we would only be eligible for fifty percent of community crossings. Currently, community crossings is about one point five million dollars a year that we're eligible to go get. Um, it's competitive process, but we've been very successful because the fund has gotten a lot of revenue. Right now, it's about three hundred and fifty million dollars a year. The state uses that and awards those projects. Recent legislation amendment caps that at one hundred million dollars a year, so reduces the overall pot, which will make those grants a lot more competitive and only allows us to be eligible for fifty percent of what we were getting for. So we can see a substantial decrease in an opportunity for funding for highway on top of whatever you're referring to earlier with the property taxes. So if we don't have a wheel tax in twenty twenty-eight, we wouldn't be eligible to get anything but the fifty percent of the, of the community crossings that's available. So the wheel tax, lock goes into that, some options, but it would have to be passed by this board in order to make that enacted, which would then make us eligible to get the full amount of community crossing dollars.
And when would that need to be done? By?
Uh, twenty twenty-eight is when that would go into effect. That part of it would go into effect in twenty-eight.
Okay.
Cuts to the overall pot would happen sooner. Um, twenty-six and twenty-seven would automatically be impacted by the overall pot of CCMG dollars available.
Okay.
Although it has to go to conference committee, possibly.
Thank you, sir. Good timing.
Any other public comment? Is there a motion to adjourn?
I have, hold on, I have a question. I have a state board in my office as of today. Next week, Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday, I need a council member for an entrance, entrance interview.
What days?
Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday.
Did they say what time?
No.
Can you say?
Whatever. They'll be in my office every day.
Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday?
Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday. You can all be there. I just need absolutely have to have one.
I can be on Tuesday.
Can you say times?
Anytime. They're in my office all day, seven to five.
Yeah, but if we, I don't know, do you want to last year, just the same opening, how would you last year?
You guys just tell me in all.
I think it's Tuesday.
You want Tuesday?
Do you want to like tag team it or break up the day? We'll be there same time right here. Where do you put them?
Either, yeah, either same time.
We do, okay.
Yeah.
Team is here at ten.
Sure.
Ten?
Yep. I just, I just have one public comment.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Earlier today in our discussion, Jewel mentioned a conversation that he had with Jennifer about putting a policy in place for the council to, hey, but it sounds like time restrictions or some speaking, uh, restraints. I would be extremely cautious about whatever this body does regarding that. We're all doing elective representatives that represent bodies and people throughout this county. Never before has that been done, and it is bothersome, troublesome, worrisome on so many fronts that we are even considering putting time limits and restrictions on elected officials about what they can speak about, and that is even being recommended or even considered from legal counsel to, to do that. I'm even more concerned about it in light of what our legal counsel has said because of his observations in past council meetings. It feels like there's an extreme biased approach in that, uh, because in the last few council meetings, it was actually me who brought up issues and portrayed them in the setting and had a presentation of which that presentation was tried, you know, there was an attempt, what I feel like, to put a time limit on that, and in the February meeting, Jennifer actually gavelled me down in an erroneous manner when another council member spoke. And when I tried to have comment, I wasn't given that opportunity. Again, whatever we do now will have long, a long-term impact, not just on this body, but for future bodies in the years and decades to come. And as we just saw last week, whether we agree with the stance that was taken, and it doesn't matter what the political party was at the time. We saw a member of Congress, you know, speak for twenty-five hours, didn't agree with anything that they said. But that was a right that they were given to be able to speak and, and freely express their opinions. But putting a time limit and a restriction on an elected official, I think is a very dangerous precedent and something that we should not even entertain, uh, because people have dissenting opinions and thoughts and views. And if someone doesn't like that and the option is to say, oh, well, we want to start putting time limits on that, it's a very, very dangerous precedent or even alley to even go down and to even have that recommended by legal counsel, more so than anyone, is even more concerning. And I think we can weigh ourselves into some legal issues personally, is what I think. So that's all I wanted to get out. Thank you.
Um, on a different note, I just wanted to give kudos to our new in-house counsel for putting together the remainder of the spreadsheet that had started back in February in terms of determining if the assertion from Commissioner Byer was in fact correct, and that was whether or not the in-house counsel would be a more cost-efficient option than our previous counsel who was not in-house. And again, she came in at the beginning of the year in perhaps not the most, um, you know, comfortable circumstances in terms of the dialogue that was happening at the commissioner and council level. And I just have to applaud her. I know she's not here today. Hopefully, she's enjoying some spring break time with her family. But her decorum and her thoroughness in getting us the spreadsheet, which in fact showed that she is, that the numbers this year are in fact cheaper than what we had paid in the past, was done again in the best way possible. And just again, her ability to come in and do good work and create an atmosphere with all of us as elected officials, I believe. Most of us have met her. I've spent some time with her, and she's just showing what a class act she is. So kudos to the commissioners for finding such a good person. I know Jewel had told us that she was incredible at Taft, and then kudos to her for really taking the baton and wading through some choppy waters there and treating us all with class. So that, that's the one comment I had. Thank you.
Let me add one other thing. Last weekend, the county had experienced some severe weather, um, and I had a chance to speak with our emergency management team, even while I was out of town, and some other elected officials throughout the municipal, uh, Boone County, our municipality. But our emergency management team did a phenomenal job responding to that. Uh, so kudos to that entire department and also the Sheriff's Department. Uh, I know somebody was holding the floor down, while the folks were, uh, I know you don't like me saying this, but we're out of town, but kudos to Chief Deputy Beer and the work that Jewel and her team did. So thank you guys for keeping us safe. We appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moving.
Is there a second?
Second.
All of them favor say aye.
Aye.
I'm opposed.